And I know that they will, they're gonna pass these skills on to their subordinates and the other officers they work with. So that all our officers will continue to embrace this concept of community policing. So again, both of them, private patrolman first class currently. And we are today honored to promote them both to corporal. And I have a few things here for them. We'll start with Michael, why don't you come on over here? And again, congratulations on your promotion to corporal as a result of your hard work, dedication, loyalty, and tenure with the Sykesville Police Department and town of Sykesville. You are hereby promoted to the rank of corporal this 11th day of October 2022. As is customary, I'm gonna provide him with his first set of corporal chevrons, the two stripes that he'll get placed on his uniform, as well as his badge. I'm actually short one corporal badge, but it's on the works. Since you went first, I'll give you the other one here very shortly. And I should also note while Michael is here that he was actually our officer of the quarter this last quarter. I think I sent that out to you. So he and Officer Picardo have done a phenomenal job working on that case, tracked down every possible lead, put together a very impressive investigation so far. And they have more work to do, but we're hoping that eventually that may lead to identification and maybe even charges against the suspect responsible. Again, great job, Michael. Your wife Christine and their three children, as well as Christine's parents, is that right? Where did you guys come from?
Westminster.
So not the west coast like you.
No, that's the other side.
Right. But we appreciate you guys being here with him tonight to celebrate his success and his promotion corporal. And hopefully you guys can, you're gonna take him to dinner with your new pay buddies, right?
That's right.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Officer Darby, PFC Darby.
So forward, same thing for you. As you all know, Rad comes to us from Westminster Police Department where he actually retired as a lieutenant. So he has a wealth of supervisory experience. And we're looking forward to him sharing that experience with all the other officers here, myself included. So same thing for you, as a result of your hard work, dedication, loyalty, and tenure, although limited tenure, with the Sykesville Police Department and town of Sykesville, you are hereby promoted to the rank of corporal this 11th day of October 2022. Brad's doing a phenomenal job with Officer Hoppa. And both of our new recruits are gonna be cut loose here in another week or so. And patrolling on their own, so great, great work. Keep up the good work.
And if I may add a few words regarding the community policing. I had the pleasure of reading in the report, as I'm sure we all have for this evening, the public safety report, in which I read probably one of my to-date most favorite examples of community policing described by your trainee, Officer Picardo, who indicated that he had assisted an elderly woman on Main Street to the service, the place of business that she was seeking, and assisted her with her bags. And another example was his playing basketball and racing with the kids down at Schoolhouse Road. So you're obviously rubbing off on your trainee. And I know that there are at least four examples of community policing with you and your trainee, Officer Hoppa. So I think if we haven't said it enough, myself and all of us included here at the table, take community policing, I mean, in my opinion, just be on safety is the importance of community policing and the upholding of the town's values as well as our laws. So thank you so very much, you guys, for what you do, and congratulations.
I forgot to mention this, that now Corporal Darby will be taking over Sergeant Byrd's group. And I guess you all know by now, I believe, I'm not the kind of the bad guy.
Sergeant Byrd is, his tenure, his resignation with this, and we'll talk about that at another meeting. But we think so highly of Corporal Darby that we're gonna ask him to actually take over the supervision of that group. And we know the group would be in good hands. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Yeah, come up here, come forward. Get the flags behind you.
Don't let me just want to look at, alright? Let's look at Christine, just look right in the middle. Keep moving the eyes.
Oh, no, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Chief, you should be up there too.
Yeah, I do want to say to you. Thank you. Did you get a pair of glasses? Thank you so much, you guys, I appreciate it. Congratulations corporal, congratulations corporal.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations kiddos, this is a big moment for the family.
Thank you all again for coming.
That's a great guy and a fantastic police officer. For you it is, sweetheart, for you it is.
Time to go to dinner.
We all do. Good night, guys, same to you, congratulations.
Remember when they were that age?
Yeah, I do.
Those were good age.
Alright, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which happens to be our announcements and reports. I'll begin with the announcement that our next meeting, mayor and town council meeting is on Monday, October 24th, 2022. And that we also have volunteer opportunities available on the Detroit District Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Police Auxiliary. Anyone interested in any of these openings or opportunities for volunteerism, please email thetown@sykesville.net for more information about these opportunities. That brings us to staff updates, and we'll begin with our town manager, Joe Costantin.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just wanna make everybody aware, so our paving projects are ongoing. Matter of fact, they're getting ready to start the striping efforts, which are pretty expansive throughout town. I do wanna mention, we are expected to receive even higher amount of highway user revenues this year than we had in previous years. And Craig might get into this a little bit in his treasures report, mainly because we got a payment that was supposed to be in last fiscal year and current fiscal year. So we have a little bit more money to kinda play with. So we are looking at other aspects and other striping opportunities. We did, in fact, expand some of the paving efforts, not in other areas, but to take over like some crosswalk areas and go ahead and get those repaved as well. So there is gonna be an increase in those costs. We'll have a better breakdown for everybody at our next meeting. So that can be approved then.
Thank you.
One other thing, we did receive a couple of complaints about speeding on Second Avenue. And one of the requests from one of the people that raised this was some of those traffic control devices similar to what we have on Central Avenue. I'll start looking into that a little deeper. I don't know if that's been an ongoing issue or if that's been discussed at some time in the past here in town. But it's not the first time I've received that phone call.
It's certainly been an ongoing issue with speeding on Second.
I know we try to do the speed trailer, but obviously, you know, they typically only listen to that when it's there. So again, those speed humps, you know, obviously they appear all the time. And then lastly, I just wanna give a thank you to the Public Works Department for, mainly for both Cooper Park and South Branch Park. Cooper Park, the event on Saturday was the last movie in the park event, and the park looked great. You know, especially wanna say thank you to Derek for his efforts Saturday morning. There was some, this is called emergency repair work that was needed in the bathroom prior to that event. So he came out and did a great job and made sure everything was working appropriately. And then, of course, we had the event at South Branch Park today to announce the $2 million award, at least publicly. And again, the park was great. And again, we didn't necessarily order the weather, but that didn't help either. Or that didn't hurt either.
Yes.
That's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you, Joe. That brings us to the treasures report. Craig, if you could please provide that to us.
My pleasure.
Or at least a summary of it. We've all been provided the hard copy.
To say at this point, I hope everyone had a chance to look at the September Treasury Report that I'd like to present at this time. We're at the 25% mark of this fiscal year. Some highlights, the revenues right now are exceeding expenditures by $37,000 with the help, obviously, of the receipt of what Joe had mentioned, the $50,000 in highway user revenue that actually was kind of like fiscal year '22 to last year, but the orders. And we decided to keep it in this fiscal year, so put that in your pocket now. And then, obviously, we also got $154K in real estate taxes and $48,000 in state income taxes, which was nice. Also, today, we received $571,000 in real estate taxes, which you'll see next month. So hopefully you'll forget about it, it'll be a great thing.
It'll be a great thing twice.
Twice, exactly. Of course, I'll say revenues, we did disperse some monies this month of September. Spent $7,500 for another facade reimbursement. $8,500 for a new transmission related to the 2016 Ford Taurus, ouch. $9,500 for Civic Plus, working on the website for the town, that's gonna be a cool thing. $54,000 we paid to DSC for a new event coordinator, which is a three-year position, which is covered by ARPA funds that we're having, so that'll be a good thing too. $8,800 came in for the Main Street cameras, which we should, I don't know, when will they be up? I guess still need.
They're scheduled to be installed this coming Thursday.
Cool, awesome. So we got that. $22,000, Derek installed a Tipper on one of the 2012 Freightliner M2 trash truck.
Green.
Green one. And we also spent $31,000 to KCI Tech on engineering, on various town projects, which are also under the ARPA fund category, which I don't know if you've been paying attention on my expenditure report, the revenues and expenditures. It's a new category, the $8,000 or the $100 mark, all the way below there. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but start paying attention to that, because those things are gonna climb as expenses there. So just on a gentle note, the audit that's been worked on, I'm working on, it's about 85, 90% done. It's going very well, of course, I'm biased. We're still hoping to be completed by the end of October for Halloween due. And then the presentation sometime in November, which I know you guys are all excited about. It's gonna be a really good one this year, I think.
Standing your word.
You've been us up at night, I think you'll like it. So other than that, I don't have anything else to add. Any questions at this time?
That was very succinct.
Did we receive all the ARPA funds?
Yes.
We have all of them. Okay. And then I.
Very nice interest.
Yeah, the shell game you're playing with, like checking to keep it from forged checks, how's that working? Is that, I shouldn't say shell game. I know you set up like another account for the forged checks, is that helping?
Yeah, I think it's definitely minimizing our exposure to any, you know, funny business from people trying to like, you know, kite or anything, the bunnies, but it's going very smoothly.
Good.
Sonic checks, mayor comes in, we transfer the funds, the wipeouts. It's also good for me to keep a track on the outstanding checks too, because I can see the balances like all the time, you know, doing it that way. So it's actually also easier in that respect.
Great.
So yeah, I'm like the way it's going, I mean, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna change myself.
So I was just wondering.
It's been a while, so.
So one question for me is, well, at the Fall Conference, there was some discussion in reference to municipalities bringing on additional revenues. I'm wondering if there's any sort of discussion going on with small towns, municipalities statewide, within Carroll County in reference to any of this discussion or not? Whether or not we've been brought into that discussion or not brought into that discussion? And I don't know if I'm directing it towards you or you, Joe, but.
Would that be related to, obviously?
Ideas.
Yeah.
It's about just other ideas about bringing in other possible revenues, I'm not sure. It would have to, it would require legislation, obviously, but it's, I'm just wondering whether or not we're a part of the conversation or not part of the conversation. And by the look on your face, it does seem like you are a part of the conversation.
I'm not quite aware that you are part of that, but that's very interesting.
As far as I know, there's not been any specific conversations as, you know, Carroll County municipalities haven't gotten together to brainstorm anything yet. But certainly, if anything like that does come up, we'll absolutely participate.
Well, and I don't know if it makes sense to reach out to MML to find out if they're building a work group of any kind and whether or not there needs to be a Carroll County participant on that. But I'm just throwing it out that this was talked about, at least in a few of the meetings that I was at, at the Fall Conference. And so different municipalities are looking to figure that out. You know, I know that we're doing well, thank goodness we're doing well. But nonetheless, I'd like to be a part of the discussion if we can be.
I welcome more revenue, so I'll try to reach out and try to see if I can get all this money, it's all too.
It's definitely at the sink tank level right now.
That's right. Just ideation.
I like it. Cool. I'll keep myself aware of it, try to see what I can find out.
Um, no. Okay, that's all, come on. Mark, do you have any questions for the treasurer?
No, but I did wanna make a point, you mentioned the website. There is some money that is there being used for cybersecurity. And one of the things they're talking about is best practices. I just advise you to keep up with them.
Absolutely.
And if they can do something for you for free.
Take advantage.
And Leo, I'm sorry, Council McKinnon, any questions for the treasurer?
No, good, thanks, Craig.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
That brings us to our public safety report. Ask chief to come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I will try to be succinct as well. Because it is a succinct public safety report, only covering September 19th through October 2nd, as you can see. Oh, you don't, Carrie doesn't have it on? 368 total events, just some of the highlights. 12 assist other agency, six community policing events, 157 patrol checks, 31 traffic enforcement initiatives, again, 368 total events, and a total of eight incident reports during this period. Which I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you may have about.
The first one, sorry.
Nope, okay.
The first one, it says that it was also another agency assist.
Yeah, we probably should talk offline about that, just due to the nature of it, but it is being handled by the state police.
State police, thank you, that was my question.
Yeah, unless the other agency, I think that was my question as well.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Anyone else? I have a silly question about why 7440 was listed as two separate events, one of them very severe and one of them not. Did they actually occur in the same address? Which incident are you referring to? That would be the fourth one.
7540.
7540 is listed in both cases, and one's obviously very serious and the other is. Right, right. You know the location of that, right, is formerly the Market Tavern. Right. Okay. I just wanted to be sure it wasn't a typo. And so for the hit and run, it just happened to be that was the closest address to where it occurred, it occurred on Main Street. Now, that makes sense now, thank you.
Are we any closer to identifying who, the hit and run?
They are making progress. They've obtained subpoenas through Amazon. And so hopefully, they're normally fairly cooperative, I'm assuming, when we go to them with the subpoena. If it is actually Amazon they are, but sometimes they have subcontractors that can lead. Right.
Okay.
Oh, was it delivery?
Yeah.
It was an Amazon truck. And Corporal Darby now and Officer Hoppa basically witnessed it, heard the collision. And I believe they actually identified the Amazon truck, if I'm not mistaken. Was the Amazon truck here, I'm just waiting for driver information. Right.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Anyone else with questions for the chief? Okay. And I'm sure you have anything else to say, chief? I know you usually like to.
Should we hold the thefts from vehicles till?
Well, it doesn't need to be held, I actually had mentioned you wanted to share with us, because we did talk about it ourselves. So this is probably, it's up to you.
Okay. It would be covered on the next public safety report, but we can briefly cover it now. Hopefully, next time I'll have more information about it. But we're currently investigating, it's up to 11 victims now, just here in town, between Hawk Ridge, Windswept, Norris, and Shimmering Run. It happened all on one evening, so there was some discrepancy about multiple nights. It was the same night that all these happened. We believe it was perpetrated by the same individual. Again, Corporal Slare and Officer Picardo are doing a phenomenal job with the investigation. One of the cards was attempted to be used at a local big box store. And they went there and did get some video, which you may have seen on our Facebook page. Some very readily identifiable tattoos that were on the back of the suspect's arms that we're hoping will lead to his identification so that we can charge him. So, you know, we put it out right away on Nixle, hopefully all of you got that Ring app, as well as Facebook. We did get some, actually, people come forward to us that had seen our post with more information and video. So it worked out fairly well. Just an ongoing investigation. I should also point out that there's been similar crimes now in Mount Airy, in Eldersburg, and I believe Westminster too. This is the type of crime that occurs frequently, especially in larger towns and cities. But we think, we believe that some of these are related, just due to geography and the timeframe.
And chief, can you confirm, I know that some of us had heard that most, if not all, of the vehicles were left unlocked? And I saw a broken window as well, so I figured that one wasn't maybe even involved.
Broken windows was from another case, that was a separate, yeah, where we actually caught the juvenile that had thrown a rock.
This case, every vehicle was unlocked.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd like to remind our residents, please lock your cars, please remove valuables from plain sight.
No one can help.
I guess I'm not divulging anything confidential when I say one young lady had a purse in the car. Yeah, so please don't do that. Park in well-lighted areas, use the garage if you have it. Just use common sense, and a lot of these cases could have been avoided. Luckily, in the majority of cases, there was nothing taken. The person went through the center console and the glove box and didn't find anything, moved on to the next. So it's actually, in terms of monetary loss, it's very minor. I think we're under $150, I think, total.
Okay.
Some CD cases, a CD case in the one year. There wasn't an attempt at the one credit card. Right, right. So, yeah, if I can.
For any new folks in, for any new folks in town, you mentioned the Ring app, can you just go through that one more time? For anyone that's new in town, the things that you can do with it if people sign up for it?
I'm glad I looked at that just before I came here, because it's, if you text "stay safe," the word together, "stay safe" to 555-888, I believe, that will put you into the system where you can register. And then you'll be, you know, you'll be notified when we send something out. And you can share video, it doesn't have to be just Ring video, it could be any security video. You can share video through the system, and we can share it back with everyone. So it's a good system to be a part of, to stay abreast of things happening in.
It's like a community watch without a community watch.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And we also have the Nixle, which is text zip code 21784 to 888777. I'm good than they are. And then you'll be part of that system, and that's mostly alert notifications that we made for town events and.
By a test.
Closures, right.
Yep, very cool.
Is that data on your website? Say again? Both of those are on the website. Okay. Some of us forget the numbers with time.
That's helpful, thanks, chief, and thanks, I almost called the janitor again. I don't know why I would do that. Thank you, Councilman Spoh, anything else, chief?
No, ma'am, thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, chief. You're welcome.
Chief, quick question, were there vehicles parked on the road, or were some of them in the driveway as well?
I think it was both.
Okay.
You know, when I lived in Columbia, I had my car broken into that was locked right up front of my townhouse. And the sense of like, just like violation is really, I think, more effective.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Affected me more than the fact that my wallet was in my glove box because I had accidentally left it in there that very day. And the only thing in there was a silver dollar, that meant a lot to me, so that and the violation. But anyway, lock your doors, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
That brings us to council committee reports. We will begin on my far right with anyone that has anything to share pertinence with the.
I do have a brief DSC report. It's a new business that has its grand opening this Saturday, October 15th, from 12 to 4. We have a ribbon cutting at 1. It is Botanical. She had a business at Farmer's Market. October 15th. I'm out of town, but if anybody could be there for the ribbon cutting, that would be great, 1 o'clock on Saturday. There'll be a community garden cleanup this Saturday as well, starting at 10 a.m. There's a sign up on the DSC website or Facebook, but feel free to show up as well. And the DSC received Main Street Improvement Program funds to be used as a mini grant for local businesses. We're following state-provided guidelines for the use of the funds. Includes marketing grants for businesses for shop small season. Last week, the program was reviewed and approved by Department of Housing Community Development. And DSC will distribute $16,000 to local merchant community for projects satisfying the approved applications. The grant application opened on September 28th, closes on October 28th. And just personally, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Joe for his three years now of service here as town manager. And just honestly point out, between Joe and Carrie and Jana and Craig, that's why these meetings last 30, 45 minutes now instead of four or five hours like they used to. So I really, the smoothness of what you guys do, and in addition to the police and the Public Works Department, it's a completely different town, and I really appreciate all the work you guys do.
Well said, well said, thank you.
I'll second that.
Is that fair enough?
You missed the last one.
I know, I appreciate the next one. So I just have an update from the Trauma Informed Care Commission that I'm sitting on. I sent out today, sorry it was delayed, the Maryland Way, which is the principles and kind of organizational implementation guidelines that the commission has adopted. And then at MML was able to get time with Aruna Miller. And she actually shared with me that on Wes Moore's page, they actually are very invested in the trauma-informed work.
Other than who, Aruna Miller is lieutenant governor?
Lieutenant, sorry, Wes Moore is lieutenant governor, candidate. And so I did share that link as well with all of you, so that you can see the connections that are being made. And encourage you all to read the principles and implementation, and then, you know, any information. and encourage you all to read the principles and implementation, and then, you know, any information that I can give you, 'cause I think across the board, I know other towns and counties are also trying to adopt some of this, and so continue to encourage all of you to understand it, and then for us to figure out how we start engaging and implementing some of that work here, so.
Thank you for that. I have nothing.
So there was a planning commission meeting on ten-three, and I know all of you are wondering, where is the signage ordinance? It is still with the planning commission, they did have a couple of questions in reference to the language. One of the chief pieces of this had to do with the sandwich board signs that are outside, making sure that there's appropriate passage to be able to get by these different signs. And Phil had actually gone and measured a lot of the sidewalks at the narrowest points, because that's what the planning commission does, and I'm just really appreciative of what they're doing to make sure that whatever ordinances that we pass will actually work for everybody in our community, including the disabled community. So that's where it is, it's still there, there's some things that the town are working on currently, and pretty soon, it'll be coming back. I think it's gonna come back to the planning commission again for this next meeting, and then probably shortly thereafter, it'll come back to us. That's all I have.
Great, great, that's helpful.
On November fifteenth, the FXX channel is going away from the economy package, and you have to pay more for it, both in English and Latino versions, but it's still available. And I looked it up, 'cause I didn't know about who FXX was, it's evidently a Disney channel that some young people seem to like, it's oriented to young men, so no wonder I never heard of it. And if there is an interest, a general interest issue for the Carroll Cable Regulatory Commission, please get it to me immediately, we have a meeting this Thursday.
Thank you, sir, much appreciated, Councilman Dyer. I have just one quick comment that I appreciated seeing, actually two quick comments. I appreciated seeing those of the council that were able to attend MML or any portion thereof, our Fall Conference in Annapolis, and I appreciated seeing Councilman Grassley join us for the check exchange, the big check exchange, the two million dollar check that was provided to the town of Sykesville, specifically as per the legislation, the Mayor and Town Council of Sykesville, for two million dollars for the improvements to the BF Schreiber Cannery Company Warehouse, and the, as well as work on the pedestrian crossing and improvements to our, to our bridge that we're working in close partnership with S H A, so.
So just a quick note, I, I just wanna publicly acknowledge Stacy, Mayor Link, for all the efforts that you've done in terms of advocacy and references, this has been a passion of yours for as long as I've known you. And this is a, this is a really big day for the town to be able to have this sort of an event, just wanna say thank you.
Yes, wait, you should see the card that it came in, yeah, so, thank you very much.
Was it one of those big?
Yeah.
Do I have to like bend over?
It wasn't, no, it wasn't that.
You have to take a picture of it.
It was a nice bed.
It was a nice bed, and actually, there's some, there's some nice things on Facebook circulating, so be on the lookout for that. It was live streamed, thanks to our clerk Carrie, who, who did that on the town's Facebook page, so anyone that missed it or is interested can see how that went, we had some nice, we had some nice participation, and, and our guest speakers, Executive, Howard County Executive Calvin Ball, and of course, our, our champion in the Senate for, that led us to this opportunity is Senator D nine, Senator Hester, Fry Hester, Katie Fry Hester, so, and Joe got to speak a little bit too, so that was.
John, always a joke.
Yes. So this evening, we have a closed session, so at this point, I guess I'll ask for a motion to go into a five-minute recess, so we can clear the room and disconnect with the Carroll Media Center.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor of a five-minute recess, aye, any opposed, none, thank you so much, we go into a five-minute recess, thank you.